All right, welcome everyone to the South Burlington School Board meeting. I'll start with comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda. Do we have any amendment? Oh, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Oh, okay, great. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Where do I stand here?
You can stand or sit. And you can use the mic.
Right. So I understand that this is my time to be able to say something about the Rebel name at this point.
It's not on the agenda, so yes, sir.
Okay.
Sir, can you introduce yourself?
I will. Is this on?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. My name is Dionne Nirmegh, and I probably am going to be a little bit here, but I've also been affiliated with the school for 52 years, so if you can give me five or six minutes, I would appreciate that. And I'm, my, my former name was Raymond Leggett, and I was from, I'm from Starksville, Vermont. I grew up in South Burlington, and I went to South Burlington schools here. I went to South Burlington High School as a seventh grader in 1965. I've been connected to South Burlington High School 52 years, played two years of soccer, two years of baseball, skied four years, played football for four years. I coached in the seventies, eighties, the nineties, and retired in 2001. I did 13 ski, seasons with skiing, three seasons I helped with softball. I was athlete of the year in 1971. I was also coach of the year one year. I received athletic council awards, and twice I've been inducted into Rebel Hall of Fame. I was once the highest paid ski coach around until somewhere in the eighties that they said that money was short, and I took a cut, and I had more kids to coach, and I needed more help, and I had to share the head coaching duties. And I even had to get a CDL to truck my own team around. In 1970, after being on dismal teams for a number of years and watching South Burlington play since 1961, 62, we got a new coach, and we won our first state championship team in 10 years. That was the first time in 10 years that a championship team ever came to South Burlington. Since then, I think there's been 130 state champ, state championship teams. I've been on numerous athletic council boards to choose athletes of the year and what have But to get there, there was a lot of growing pains, and you know, just to give you an example, there were gang fights in Burlington at that time, and one of the quarterback was beat up, and it was in the hospital, beat up by chains, and I had to become the starting quarterback against Wes Rutland when I was a 10th grader. In 1971, we had just won a state championship, and our school, school's name, The Rebels, came into question by groups in the South, despite the Free Press constantly showing us with a Patriot hat on in the, in the Free Press. In all the years I played and went to the games at South Burlington, I only saw the Confederate flag twice, and both times they asked us to, you know, asked people to put it down, and, but I saw the American flag every day. On our football helmets, on our football huddles, we did not talk about the Confederacy. We did not talk about the Civil War. We did not, but we did argue hard about the Vietnam War. I am saying this on my own, and probably even people that are in the Rebel Alliance may not even like this, but I don't see where there is any difference between the Confederate flag and the United States of American flag. The American flag, we salute it every morning. In God we trust. We just pledge allegiance to it right here in front of us. In my day, we were trying to get rid of the pledge of allegiance, because we felt like it didn't need to be in our schools every day. The American flag stood for slavery way before the Confederate flag did. In fact, it stood for slavery for 86 years until 1863. It was 100 years after that before things really changed, in probably the early 1960s. The American flag has been a symbol of repression and annihilation of the American Indians. The American flag flew over every treaty that has ever been made, and never honored any one of those treaties. It has flown over our country as it showed one face and took land from its other face. It allowed immigrants to take land that wasn't theirs. When Indians were starving in Minnesota, they finally rebelled in 1862. The New Elm massacre killed 586 people. All the Sioux were gathered up. There were some that helped the American, a lot of people escaped, but they were all rounded up and hung indiscriminately whether they were involved in the massacre or not. Sham trials and hangings endorsed by Abraham Lincoln himself. He signed the papers to hang.
Sir?
No, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna-
I know you've spent a lot of time preparing this.
I am gonna get it done, and I'm gonna say it, and I'm gonna walk out of here, and you won't have to worry about the name again.
No, I'm, I'm not worried. I'm just, we, we have other people that may want to speak, so I just, if you can summarize in any way, that would be great.
I'm not done yet. Under the American flag, presidents from Jefferson on have endorsed wars everywhere. Homer St. Francis, abnaki chief of Vermont, has asked about, was asked about the political correctness of getting rid of the Indian name at Rice and Danville High Schools. His sarcastic response was, "It doesn't matter or bother me about the name, but you might as well take it away, because you've taken everything else away from us." I have written three letters to the Free Press and to this board. From this board, I got no response back, only the computer saying thank you for your input. Since I don't live in South Burlington, I don't count. I'm not a voter. I went to SB, and I had my world opened up by school. I have been inclusive. I have been an ambassador for my school always. I have played my heart out, coached my heart out, taught to stand up for what I was, felt was right. I have made many stands that were uncomfortable. I had teachers that pushed me to question everything that was right and wrong. Thank God I have been rebellious, and I look deeper than I was taught after I got out of school. I thought, if I thought the Rebel word smacked of racism, I wouldn't be here. I feel that is somewhat of an ironic game. You taking away a word that has been with me for 52 years. Isn't this sort of a reverse racism? My great-great-grandmother lived it to 104. Her first husband died in 1864 in Andersonville Prison in the Civil War. He was in the Union Army. I don't know what his reasons were for fighting, but he gave his life so I could become a This board does not want to have a discussion, does not want to have a vote. You don't want to rock the boat anymore. You want to put it behind you. You want to assure somebody's feelings are not hurt. The quicker you change the name, the faster the fury will be down. So any semblance of democracy is squashed in order to appease for a new idea or for a new name. My relatives served in this country, lived here, volunteered, died, chased ideals, believed in democracy, sent me to school so I could say I'm a Rebel. Slavery happened since the beginning of civilizations. It's degrading, it's wrong, it's cruel. It takes a Rebel to fight and stand up to all forms of tyranny. The vote would be the right thing to do, and I can't even vote.
Thank you for taking the time to prepare that, and thank you for all your years of service to the extracurricular teams here. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And I just want to say that I, I feel, I feel, I feel good that you allowed me to continue on. And, you know, maybe these guys are the new Rebels, so.
You're welcome. All right, any other comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none. David, any amendments to the agenda?
No.
We'll move on to agenda item five, student representative report and announcements.
So, let's see, so this week, the SB mascot selection process was narrowed down to three options, and the final poll will be actually tomorrow. And so those three options are the Wolves, Huskies, and Pride, and that's Pride as in a pack of lions. So that'll be fun for students to vote on that tomorrow. Also, AP exams are continuing, and the statewide science fair winners, some of them traveled recently to compete, I believe. And prom is this weekend, on Saturday. Also, Tuttle Fest is happening here. I'm not sure what the exact date is on that.
Friday.
Friday, okay. And then, also, there's a blood drive next Tuesday from 9:00 AM to 2:30 PM, and that's hosted by the National Honor Society at South Burlington High School.
Fourth quarter progress reports were handed out this week. They're also, were in any classes on Wednesday of last week and today due to PLP conferences and sophomore exhibitions. The final packed dinner of the year occurred today, I believe, today.
Yep, just before the meeting.
Right before the meeting. All sports award night is happening on the 25th, and the eighth grade step-up night occurred yesterday.
Great. Other announcements from the board? Or David, I've got one in here that Isaiah handed me, that PACT has presented a certificate of gratitude to the South Burlington School Board for living by the mission of PACT. I'll leave that with you to take care of. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else, David? Okay. All right, we'll move on to city school collaboration.
So just giving some update, Elizabeth and I met with Helen and Kevin. We covered a multitude of topics in really preparing, I think, most importantly, for the steering committee meeting on May 24th. So May, May 24th at the city offices will be the steering committee meeting, and that will begin at 6:30. Some of the things that we certainly will be addressing will be the, the school's budget, and then implications on the city and school as far as taxpayers, taxpayer information. So again, that's really what we have. We, we do that once a month. We're trying to make that a little bit more frequent for the city-school collaboration.
Do you, or do you want to solicit any recommendations from the board for that agenda, or is, will that come out online?
So Kevin, Kevin has put forward a draft agenda. We'll get it out to you very soon. So again, I saw that it was in the works today. I did not get it back from him yet, though, so I'll have it for you.
Okay, and I think we've covered this, but for our newer board members, by city charter, the steering committee meets three or four times a year, I believe.
Right.
It's not a, a voting body, but it is an opportunity to kind of share ideas and priorities between the two city entities and calibrate a little on those. All right, move to agenda item seven, the superintendent's report.
So I just have one item, and the one item I want to report out on is that I, I did attend the state, state board meeting yesterday. It was held at Winuski High School, and the purpose of my attendance was to request a waiver from the state board for us dropping below the required 175 days. We dropped below 175 on April 21st, when we, when we declared no school on that particular day following some pretty emotional related events. The State Board of Education was 100% in granting that waiver. It's not something that I hope we have to do again, but it did not make sense for us to come back to make up that one day. Staff will be making up the day as they have all other days, but again, for students to change graduation or any other kind of ending activity at this time in the year did not make sense. And again, the state board was 100% understanding, and I just wanted to make the board aware of that.
David, can you, can you explain, based on employment contracts, there are committed contract days, can you explain how teachers kind of make up the days from a contracts standpoint?
Right, so the classroom teachers are, are teachers. All staff actually have, have certain number of days. Our teachers and administrators are contracted for so, certain number of days. So our teachers are 189 days, and so when we drop a day, we make up that day. We don't bring up, bring the students back unless we drop below 175, or a decision by me or a direction from you to do so. So currently, as a result of, we had some inclement weather days, and then we dropped that 21st day, which dropped us below the, the 175th. By law, we're required to have students in, in school 175 days or more. Because we dropped below that, I'm not, nor is the school board authorized to, to do that. It has to, it requires a waiver from the State Board of Education. So contractually, we make those days back up. We do a variety of things for our varied staff. Some will, will, will come in and provide, be provided training. There are logs that our staff have to do. This particular day will be made up based on some expect, expected readings and a response that we think, we think is important. So those, those, that's how that goes for the staff.
Other board questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question. So when we originally set out our schedule for the year, we had, we had it with 180 days. Is that right?
180 student days.
Yeah, 180 student days, and we didn't budget for snow days. So basically, saying that we have 180 school days, we're, we're including any days that we have to cancel because of snow or, or whatever. So ultimately, we're not, we're not starting out at 175. Would, would it be possible?
Well, we're not starting out at 180.
Yeah, we're starting out at 180, and we, we go down through the year every, every time we need to. Would it be possi, would it be something to consider, starting at a higher amount, and then if we don't go beyond 180 or reduce the number of days, then shortening the school year at some late point in the year, perhaps April, once we know that the, you know, maybe the snowstorms have passed?
So typically, again, what you have is, you have five more days than what the, what the law requires.
Yeah.
That was negotiated. That's a negotiated agreement between the school board and the teachers.
Mm-hmm.
And we typically, and again, I- We typically do lose a day, although that's not always the case. But we have rarely lost probably more than three days in any one year. Part of the reason why, while this can certainly be talked about more as a board, but when you have to make up every single day that you lose as a snow day, it causes some disruption to your end calendar date, which, which makes difficult issues for families. It's difficult for kind of end of the year course options. It's difficult for graduation requirements. So that's, that's essentially where we're at with that. And again, the staff are required to make up those days. Again, you're not wrong in that the student, the students don't get the same allotment that we hoped for. But again, I, I think it's also fair to say that most of our staff and most of our students do a good amount of, of additional work.
Mm-hmm.
Most of them, at times when they're, when they're off.
I, I know I've talked to some districts, Alex, that, or SUs that have the alternative. They plan to the exact number of days, and then they do have to, if they lose days, they have to add them at the end of the school year.
Yes.
So I know I've talked to educators and other supervisory unions or districts that will, their year was supposed to end like June 10th, and they're still going back around June 20th, depending on weekends and so forth in there. And I, I know some of the feedback is the impact on teachers' professional development that's been scheduled, if they're taking summer courses.
Yeah.
Family vacations may be impacted.
Student work.
But one of the big issues is the quality of the days that they're coming back, kind of as the, as the summer is really upon us. So it's a, from my perspective, talking with them, it's a bit of a catch-22.
Yeah.
And then I know from planning graduation, we lock in a venue and a date that has a little less flexibility to it than, I guess we'd love to have more, but it's hard to, hard to schedule, too.
Yeah. Well, what my experience was, in my elementary school days, is we had a school calendar set out to send, end at say, I don't know, June 20th or something like that. And then if there weren't, if we didn't use our allotment of five snow days, we'd just end school a few days earlier.
Certainly, there's, there's a lot of practices in place across the state. We have, you know, always tried to be sensitive to all of the, kind of the moving parts, as Elizabeth outlined, you know, vacations that have been planned and paid for, you know, work that's been, you know, targeted, graduations and families coming for those types of things. And so we've, we've, again, we've tried to be sensitive to that. This is an anomaly.
Yeah.
Year. I mean, I say that. I hope we, we don't have situation like this in the future.
Right.
We can look at our past data. We've, you know, we've usually dropped a day, but in most cases, not more than a day.
Mm-hmm.
And, and again, some of that's, you know, very, again, very contingent upon what the weather's doing.
Yeah. So, so do we usually have maybe one or two snow days per year? Just one or two?
One or two has been kind of our, our past.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this, this year, we had five plus the-
Again, we had, we had three inclement weather days, and then, then we had, actually, four inclement weather days, and then we had this, the 21st that was a decision. It wasn't, it wasn't an inclement weather day.
Right.
It was a decision.
Yep.
Based on a variety of reasons.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item eight, budget communication.
So I think you have at your place, I know a draft for the board. I know, I think just the board has this, but it's a, a draft for a one-pager. And Bridgette, I don't know, or Martin or Elizabeth, I know you've done a lot of work on that. I know John Obin has helped a little bit here and there.
Yeah, so this would be a single page. It would be double-sided. We would hope to print it double-sided. And yeah, I've had input from a few folks, and sort of, it's been through a few iterations. We know there are a couple of mistakes still in it that need to be resolved, and a couple of footnotes that still need filling in with information from John and Amadi in the district office. So the main things I know need to be updated are the total, the change in revenue number didn't capture the top line, the, the change in the state education fund. So that needs to change, as well as the percentage change number on that line. And then we also need to fill in footnotes two and three, just to better explain what's in those categories, because there are some reasonable size shifts in those categories. So we're just trying to answer as many questions in advance as we can. And those are the, the main things I know that are changes that I wanted to make. And then Martin also had another comment that I realized after I hit send to David did not make it, which is a state mandate on the very first page in the impact section uses a hyphen. So I don't know if anyone has any thoughts or feedback positive.
One thing, Bridgette, is there is a page attached that kind of came in when this was being printed.
Mm-hmm.
That does provide the footnote detail on-
Okay, got it.
At least, is it two items or?
It was two items I was looking for. Yeah, other purchased services and equipment were the main things.
Yeah, I know the, I know one of the notes on the equipment was that it's primarily academic-related in that top bullet point for that footnote under one.
Right.
It sounds like you're still looking for, or purchased services is still an open issue. Is that right?
Other purchased services, David sent me an email about what's included in there. I mean, that is the line item that really captures most of the services we buy from Howard Center and sort of outplacement of special needs, you know, services. So that one, I think I have enough information, because all I wanted to do is just say what types of services were included in that one. And we've talked a lot in board meetings and in the budget presentation that will be online about why special needs services are, are increasing. The equipment was the one. I'm confused, or just by equipment, it says, it's up 43,000. I'm just, I'm not seeing this whole... Okay, I've got it. He's broken out the separate, the tiny, separate accounts within the ledger that make up that number, that 178 that's in there.
Yeah, it looks like, I've got three accounts making up about 170 of it, so I think it's captured most of it.
Yep.
So maybe Bridgette or Elizabeth, I know we, it's not ready, it wasn't ready to go out, because it was in draft form, but I think-
Right.
Maybe just outlining a little bit of the, the one-pager kind of front and back would be helpful for people to, to know.
Because they don't have it in front of them, yes.
Yeah, right. I just, I think it's nice.
So, yeah, so basically, this is a one-pager that we'll use at community meetings if other people want copies of the flyer to hand out to other people. There'll be some in the district office, and it's basically just a sort of summary document to answer some of the highest level questions about the budget that we're putting up for a vote on June 6th. So there is sort of a segment at the top that just says budget highlights that talks about the impact on the tax rate, which is a tax decrease of 1.2%. I'm not going to go through every bullet point. It talks a little bit about what you'll see on the actual ballot, so it has the total expenditure budget. It has the cost per pupil, the cost per equalized pupil, which will be on the budget, or the ballot, sorry, of an increase of 2.32% for 15,401 per equalized pupil. So that's one section, the budget highlights, and then there's the impact. So it talks about the things that will happen if this budget passes, what it allows the district to do, which is really to sort of move the district forward, both in terms of maintaining the services that we've had in the past, but also implementing some new initiatives that we've talked a lot about in previous meetings, like two new teachers, one at Orchard and one at Central, to keep class sizes reasonable for K through five students, as well as a contingent elementary teacher, some additional staffing at the high school, to make sure that required classes, state mandated classes, are the right size for a certain cohort that's moving through the high school that's larger than typical. Some additional mental health support at the high school, personalized learning plans, which we're still developing at the middle school and the high school, and the pilot program we've talked about to support trauma-affected students. And then there's a results section that talks about, you know, the, the rankings of the school district and various sources, how we compare to other school districts in terms of our spending per student. And then on the back page, there's a budget summary. So it, it just summarizes, there's a very detailed budget. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Jon Stewart was saying to me that the very detailed budget that sort of compares FY '16 to FY '17, and then FY '17 to this new proposed budget. He was saying to me that, that, that more detailed one that was in the budget book is actually required by charter.
Correct.
And that he and Amadi are working on a very, very detailed one that will be available on the website. But for summary purposes, just so people have at least some top-level information, we summarized it into just a few line items, so people can see how those are changing from last year. And then at the bottom of that second page is just a little bit about voting and how to make sure that you're registered, when you can get more information. So I should say that our budget information meeting is on Monday, June 5th at 7:00 in the cafeteria here, just across the hall from here. So that's sort of the town meeting night, if you will, about this budget. And then there is a link to, or at least the, the web address for the full budget presentation that David presented last week will be available. And then Jon Stewart and some of the other central office staff and John Obin have been working on updating the frequently asked questions that were asked not only about this budget so far, but about previous budgets, and updating the numbers in those questions, categorizing them, and putting links to different headlines, so that you can sort of go to the website more easily and say, "I have a question about salaries and benefits," for example, and what they look like in this budget, and there'll be a list of frequently asked questions that have already been asked, and you can see if your question is there before you have to reach out. And so that's just kind of what we're looking at as a board. We kind of need to approve this, if not tonight, with these changes that we've talked about, then really tomorrow, we really need to start getting this out, because David's got a lot of meetings that he's going to. There are a few people who have requested the one-page flyer in the community, so we just need to sort of wrap it up.
One question. Do we need to change the net increase in expenditures of 1.6 percent?
It should be 1.7.
Yeah, 1.69, or?
1.69, yeah.
Yep. I thought I had changed that. It somehow didn't make it into this version. Yep.
And you have an extra "and" in your first footnote.
Excellent. Thank you.
Bridgette, you may have mentioned this just in the revenue line, the dollar change column.
Yep. That's what we just talked about.
You just said, okay, sorry.
Yep. Yeah. David pointed that out to me earlier today. Yeah. I had a little bit of-
Earlier today. It was really early today, actually. Your email came to me. Yes.
Yes.
Very early.
It was very early today.
I mean, I'm fine with this, with, and I trust that the purchased services and equipment, that you will put that in fine. I mean-
Okay.
I'm happy to take another look for editing purposes afterwards, but I think this looks good.
Well, I can, I can put the finishing touches on this tonight after the meeting, and then, I'm happy to pass it around one more time. And then, I don't know, David, if there's a cutoff that you would like to set for, you know, either get more comments in, or it's going out as is. I don't know if you have a deadline.
I think it's good. It doesn't mean that we can't tweak as we go along in some meetings. There may be some things that are coming up as feedback, that you want to add another component, either under the impact, or results, or what have you. But I think the most important thing is it becomes available as a talking, you know, a talking point, information where people can, you know, continue to be more educated about what the proposed budget is. So, I think it's, I think it's great.
I have one question. What do you all think of adding one digit to the percentage change? So, for total revenues, instead of 3%, you'd see 3.1%?
It would be, no, it would be 4.89%.
Oh, 4.8, okay, that's right.
That's the line that's the mistake.
Yep. And then, total expenditures, instead of five, you'd have 4.9%. And a lot, some of these are really small. There's a minus 1%. I'm not sure what it is. I'm not going to crunch it right now, but for some of them, it's significant.
I'm happy to do that. I mean, it's additional clarity in terms of detail versus just how it looks on the page. It's, I don't know, I'm not fussed either way. I understand that, you know, in terms of the total expenditure budget, you know, it does sort of say four, it would say 4.9 as opposed to five.
Yeah. You know, a lot of people look at that bottom-line number, and if we're rounding it, we're not telling the whole story.
Yep. I'm happy to do that.
And David, correct me if I'm wrong, but are absentee ballots available now?
They are. They're available now. And you can, absentee, you can register. And regis, you can same-day register right up until the voting, you know, right at the voting day.
One question I did have about this, and maybe I need to reach out to Donna specifically on this. This came up as I was drafting the budget article for the other paper, was, my understanding was that in the last go-around, people who had voted absentee on the first budget were automatically mailed ballots for the second budget, because this is still technically the same meeting that we started back in March. It's still open until we pass the budget. So, my understanding was that for all subsequent budget votes, they would just automatically receive ballots in the mail. So, people need to understand that those would be coming their way.
That is true. That will continue again. Yeah. I don't know when Donna sends them out.
I got mine today.
Okay.
Yeah, so-
They're sending out. Okay.
Okay. I might just footnote that as well, because that was confusing, because my husband went to vote last time and was told, "Just beware that if there is another budget vote, you'll end up getting a ballot in the mail, because you have now registered as absentee."
Yeah. We have some, we have obviously some residents that have, you know, they have wintered in the warmer areas of our country.
Mm-hmm.
And so, in the past, what Donna has done is she has sent out those notices. And she has sent out letters to both residents to affirm that they just need to let us, let her know where they're going to be sent, so that they don't go to their, I'm going to just say, Florida resident, they're coming to her, this resident, because of the timing, or the time of the year. So, she's, she seems to be on top of that. If you want more detail, I can certainly, we can certainly ask her, but I know that she's, she's been sensitive to, you know, to that particular issue.
Okay. Isaiah?
I just thought it might be worth sharing that I've been working with the Young Democrats Club, and hopefully, we're going to be bringing in a new Young Republicans Club. I think that's starting. But to, just to encourage students who are 18 to participate in this discussion and attend budget meetings and vote on the budget, just to get student involvement.
That's great. We had talked earlier this week, David, Elizabeth, and I as well, about talking to Donna to see if she could actually set up voter registration at the school, because some people have turned 18 in the midst of all this. I may not be registered to vote. And I don't think that we've had that conversation with her yet.
No, but with same-day registration, it's a bit of a moot point, as long as people, anyone knows that they can register at the polls.
Yep.
And I think there was, I know, I received a couple of questions, but this is maybe a good time to clarify. There's some confusion about whether or not, if this third budget were to be defeated, that we go automatically to a level-funded budget. And we, the clarification is the city charter basically calls for the board to diligently pursue an approved budget. There's no definition of diligent or diligently pursue, and arguably, that's being done right now. But the purpose for the board having directed administration to develop a level-funded budget is, in our contractual obligations, we have to notify staff who might be affected by a RIF, which is a reduction in force by certain dates, which actually got extended during the time period between the first and second budget votes. And we have had to notify staff, again, of the potential of their position being eliminated because of that contractual commitment. So, we have to prepare to operate under a level-funded budget, but it doesn't mean that we would automatically go to a level-funded budget. And the board has not had that discussion at this point, nor have we made any decision about what interim steps might look like. So, I know Cory and the other papers done a detailed explanation of this, to hopefully clarify the issue a little bit more, and hopefully, this will serve to clarify that as well.
And if I can just offer just one further clarification, is that, that we are allowed to operate on a level-funded budget until we get a budget in place. So, and that's kind of part of that.
Other budget communication conversation?
I just wanted to talk. Martin and I sat down with Susan Rick and Kristen Curcell yesterday, and basically, set up a Facebook page that we're calling, I think we decided to call it South Burlington School District FY 2018 Budget. So, it would be specifically focused on the budget. I think we can always reassess later, if we want to change the name of it and make it broader. But it would be another way of just providing information to the community. You have at your places two things that came out of that conversation. One is, it has about and participation policy. These are just a couple of draft paragraphs that we put together, that we would love some board input on. And the about section just sort of talks about what we're planning to use the page for. And the participation policy just sort of sets some of the norms and what the consequences are if the norms are broken for the page. And the idea would really be to get the page up and running tonight or tomorrow. It's already essentially set up. It's not published, so you can't go search for it just yet. We wanted to make sure that there was some content in there before we actually opened it up. But the idea is really to provide clarification on information that's out in the community that might not be quite correct, or to, and to answer some frequently asked questions, and to call up highlights from the budget as we're moving through this process. The goal would really be to use it as a way of driving traffic back toward the website, which is, has the budget presentation that David has done, and is sort of being updated in real-time with additional budget information. So, as I said, clarified frequently asked questions, a detailed budget comparison document that the central office is working on. So, the idea would be to use the Facebook page to really drive people back toward those more detailed resources, without getting into an extreme amount of detail on the page itself. So, that is the idea, just because it seems like a lot of people are using Facebook as a means of communication. There's a lot of information about all the budgets that's sort of gone around. Some of it great, and some of it not quite correct. And we just wanted to make sure that there was sort of a verified source where people could go. The idea would be, in terms of posts, you can set up your page so that posts are sort of set up to go up on specific dates. And in terms of, we want to make sure that all of the board was seeing at least what we were trying to put up, but we don't want to have to call a meeting, or, you know, or a meeting every time we want to get a Facebook post approved by everybody. So, the idea would perhaps be to, to give you sort of batches of potential posts, and see if everyone could sort of say, "Yes, we're comfortable with these." And then, we will put those up at appropriate times. Martin and I will be the two administrators of the Facebook page for now, since we can't have more than two because of open meeting laws. And we're sort of raising our hands to see how it goes through, through the budget vote. And then, we can kind of reassess as a board where we are and how it worked out, and whether we want to carry it forward. And then, if we're going to carry it forward, how those responsibilities would be divided up. So, Martin has, the second page you have about the Facebook page is Martin took a crack at the first three posts, potential posts, and then started to brainstorm a list of other sort of titles for posts, or other things that we might want to cover. So, we'd love feedback on, on all of this. So, the about, the participation policy, the first post, as well as the brainstorm. And we would love to have other inputs. We'd love to have input from the community as well, about things that, that would be helpful to see on the webpage, or the Facebook page, as we move forward. We decided on Twitter, we also talked about Twitter. We decided that we're not particularly savvy on Facebook, but we're even less savvy on Twitter. And we already have resources in the district. Pat Burke, for example, who is quite proficient in Twitter and is very active, and can help drive traffic to the Facebook page and to the website already. So, I think the idea was to really sort of focus on the Facebook page and get that up and running. And it's going to take a lot of monitoring and a lot of time and effort. So, maybe to sort of keep it simple and focus on the Facebook page for now, unless there's any real energy behind us moving forward with Twitter as well.
Wow. Thanks.
Yeah. Just a couple other comments with this. Is, and we're essentially, I mean, it's a board Facebook site. And to the extent where we want to be talking for the board, but of course, if there's anything we want to put up there that we think that the board needs to weigh in on, we would have to do that in advance. But what I'd like to do is, is essentially have everybody, you know, all the board, look at the budget questions and comments. And, and if people are fine with that, I mean, Bridgette and I have talked about really using this as our base information, as well as the, you know, the budget presentation that we have received to populate or to answer questions. You know, if there's a question that comes in that is not addressed here, that's when we're going to have to circle around to the board to get input. But, but if you could, look at the latest draft of those and make sure everybody's fine with that, and let David know, so he can, you know, let us know that we can use that.
So, this is, this is this packet here.
Yeah, there's-
Right.
So, there's a large packet. And remember, we have had a multitude of frequently asked questions that have been posted up on our webpage. So, these are, this is not different. We categorized them based on some feedback, again, Martin and Bridgette. And we've categorized them into, and also numbered them, so they can be easily referred to, either by title and then number. So, if you're making a response on the Facebook page, or those that might be tweeting it out, they can go to the title and the number to try to get that. So, that's essentially-
And this will probably form the base material that we're using for the daily post. The idea is to put out a post every day with some facts about the budget. And to, to the extent we can respond to questions that might come up. The one issue with this is, is there will be comments, and, you know, one cannot turn off comments. And this is going to be the big test on whether that's something a board can take on, if there's a lot of comments and a lot of questions that we have to answer. And this will be a nice test run for us over the next three weeks. But, but we do, you know, the participation policy is pretty important, and we'll see how that goes as well, because we definitely don't want to do any censoring of individuals, however, if they're not following this participation policy. And I think that is something we should go over, if we're going to put this out, publish it tonight. This is the first post. But in any event, the following behaviors are prohibited on the page, is what the participation policy says. Communication made with the intent to intimidate, threaten, harass, or annoy others. Actually, I have one comment right away on that. I don't know that we can help but have annoyance. So, I would strike-
I think that, I should say, and I should have footnoted somewhere, these came from what we were already doing at the high school. And so, these are sort of some norms that came from the high school. So, some of them might be a little geared toward high school students in terms of the tone of the-
No, I think the intimidate, threaten, and harass is fine, but I would strike or annoy.
Okay.
The second's repeated or pervasive taunting, name-calling, belittling, mocking, put-downs, or demeaning humor, communication that creates an intimidating and hostile environment or profanity. And I would just say that this, this is what we require of the civil discourse at school board meetings. It's really not different than that. And that's what, you know, if we're in a school board meeting and individuals are doing any of this, we're fully in our authority to recess or to ask the person not to be speaking, et cetera. So, I think that it shouldn't run into any kind of different problems than what we might have to deal with. Although, in social media, people tend to perhaps forget civility sometimes. Any event, so, it'll be an interesting test.
So, we, we just kind of signed off not long ago on a social media, I don't think it was a policy, but a procedure. So, what is the expectation of board members that are not administrators? Can we observe, or join the page and spectate?
That is why we decided there would just be two of us on there. And I'd say until, it's a little unclear. That issue is a little unclear, and probably, at this point, we should, and we can get further input on that.
But, but what I'm hearing is, we, we should probably not even access the Facebook page at this point, until we were clear.
Until, until we're absolutely clear. I would say that, that would be the safe bet. And we probably should get some input from, I'm not sure who we'd turn to for that, but-
We can ask the V S B A.
Yeah.
Folks, help on that.
So, I guess, I guess the fundamental question I'd have is, how will, you know, how will the rest of the board be informed on kind of what, you know, what feedback the page is getting, what questions are being asked, those, those kinds of things?
Well, there could be some things that we can do around, maybe capturing what's on there. And I can certainly send to the rest of the board as an FYI kind of thing. This is what's currently, current activity, and just make sure you're aware of it. It doesn't allow you then to be on it. I don't think that would be a violation.
Yeah, I think that's-
You know, but I think, again, as Martin said, we can seek a little bit of additional guidance. At the present time, we can, we can go slow, at least for everybody observing. But again, work to keep everybody informed on what's, what's being posted.
You know, Bridgette, I don't know if you read sort of the opening statement. It might be helpful just to kind of go through that, so there's clarity on-
Sure.
It sounds like this will be posted as the intent of the Facebook page.
Right. So, the about section, the draft, and this is just draft form. Even Martin hasn't really had a chance to look at this, I don't think. This South Burlington, or the South Burlington, if I've got a mistake in the very first word. The South Burlington School Board has developed this page to provide the community with additional information regarding the proposed budget for the 2017-2018, in parentheses, fiscal year, 2018, school year. The board intends to post highlights of the budget, clarify information that has been reported inaccurately elsewhere, and direct community members to resources that can provide further details about specific topics about which they may have questions. The board does not intend to use this page to debate the merits of specific line items in the budget. We hope that the community will use this page as a source of verified information regarding the FY 2018 budget. At this time, only the board and certain district staff will have the ability to post information to the page in order to ensure accuracy. We ask that questions about the budget, or the page, or suggestions for new posts be directed to the board at schoolboard@sb schools dot net. And then, Martin read the participation policy, which, which is the second part.
So, I guess I would clarify that either only some, or only two members of the board will have that ability. And then, if posts are directed to the school board email, what's the expectation on kind of closing the circle on those? of closing the circle on those?
You mean, if questions are directed toward...
Yeah, if, I mean, we've got it in here that we ask that questions about the budget, or the page, or suggestions for new posts be directed to the Board.
Yeah, and the posts and the comments on the page, I think obviously Martin or I need to respond to, since we're sort of managing the page. Questions about the budget, I think we need...
If it's content-related.
Right. If it's content-related, I think we need to talk a little bit more broadly, not just about the Facebook page, but about our responsiveness, and in terms of dividing up responsibilities, in terms of responsiveness to emails that we're getting, because we're at a high volume of emails right now. Some of them are simply emails telling us what people think, and they need some brief response, but some of them really are valid, you know, questions that we owe people responses on. And I think it would be helpful if we could clarify or, you know, somehow divide up that kind of work, because I think Martin and I are going to have our hands full really monitoring the traffic and the comments on the page and seeing what's going on each day. Not that we can't, obviously, we can help direct people to the right information on the district website, or the right person to talk to at the district if there's something that we can't answer. But it would be good if perhaps others could sort of help a little bit with that.
Well, I know one thing we had, you know, talked about was maybe just sort of splitting the alphabet up. I know I've tried to stay on top a lot of these, but if there isn't a specific question, it is a bit of a full-time job, or, you know, takes up about 12 hours of the day. So I do apologize to any members of the community that haven't had a direct response. But if there isn't a question, I've sort of used that as a criteria, whether it's just the standard, thanks for the email and we're in receipt of it. Just for the community, the entire Board individually receives a copy of the email that goes to the schoolboard@sbschools.net address. So I guess, yeah, I don't know the best way to address that until maybe we see what the volume is coming in that's not budget-related at this point. It sounds like you or Martin will take the budget-related questions or suggestions to the page itself.
Yeah.
So I know we have the meeting next Wednesday. Can we warn 15 minutes as an update on the communication bit, so we can let you all know how it's going on the Facebook, and we can regroup if we need to change things? Is that possible? I know before the, or right after the...
Steering committee meeting.
Steering committee meeting.
We could warn it. We can warn it that way. Once we get the agenda from Kevin and the city folks, we can ask that we just incorporate that.
You're saying incorporate it into the...
Not into the steering committee meeting itself.
In advance or...
In advance or after, just...
We can have it separate. Alex has it.
Alex?
I just have a question about the format of the Facebook page. I know you spoke about this a little bit, and you said that this would be a platform to kind of make announcements from the Board and like clarify questions, stuff like that. But I was curious about the community involvement aspect of it. You were mentioning that people could make comments. I was just wondering, like, could people also make posts onto the page?
No, no, that's what we were trying to clarify with this. At this time, only, now it should read, only two members of the Board and certain district staff will have the ability to post information to the page. Just because I think it's a reasonable expectation for us to stay on top of comments and to our own posts, but then to try to stay on top of other people's posts that may have correct or incorrect information, or, you know, may have other agendas versus the budget. We really want to keep this focused as much as we can on the budget itself, and as a tool for the budget only at this time. So that's why we're sort of keeping a tight control on it at this stage.
So I guess the two ways community members could ask questions or give their input would be through comments or through sending an email?
That's right.
I don't know if that could be clarified a little bit more in the about section. And then I also want to ask, there's this part that says, does not intend to use the page to debate the merits of specific line items on the budget? Does that mean that the Board does intend to use the page to debate, like, not specific line items?
Not specific.
Yeah, we could certainly broaden that. I mean, we're hoping it's more of providing information versus debating. I mean, as a Board, we've already approved the budget, so clearly, the community knows what our standpoint, you know, approved it unanimously. Yeah.
And I would just add, I mean, we're not in a position to debate things on behalf of the Board, because, you know, we can certainly post information that every, that the Board has agreed to and the administration's agreed to, but that actually goes into a whole other realm of, that's what happens at the Board meetings that are warned, so, yeah.
I mean, I didn't think so either, but...
Those are great clarifying questions, Alex. Thank you.
Yeah, Alex and Isaiah, I think too, you know, this may be a venue, the Board's sort of debated. We've been asked by the community to sort of have a stronger social media presence and been somewhat resistant, just because there's a, you know, a lack of resources, and certainly with five volunteers, it gets a little bit tougher. But it might be helpful if you folks can kind of monitor the page up until June 6 and provide your input as to, from your perspective, kind of what's working and what's not working, and provide feedback as well.
Yeah, for sure.
Good.
Yes, look for the younger people to, social media experts. Thank you.
You'll do just fine. Though, one thing I noticed on, I mean, I know it's under the category of tax rate, but because the lead sentence on that one is early voting has started, it might be relevant to indicate the absentee ballot comment right up front there, if that's going to be right on one of the first posts.
Yeah, when I read that first one, Martin, I almost thought maybe we should have two separate posts, that there should, we should go ahead somewhere early in the queue, have one about voting, and the fact that you can already do it, and that you should be getting something in the mail if you're already absentee. So perhaps the first couple days, we have maybe two posts a day, just to sort of get some of this top-line information out. Because that could certainly be expanded to just sort of have some of the same bullet points that are in the flyer, and, you know, things about voting. There could be a separate voting one and a separate tax rate one. We could certainly say two more sentences about the tax rate and have a separate post on that one. The idea was to keep these pretty short, so that people aren't feeling overwhelmed by trying to sift through them, that they can just go get little bite-sized chunks of information.
Okay. So it sounds like you, to the extent that there's any material feedback from the rest of the Board, you kind of need that real time, at least on the first three items?
Right.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from the Board?
Yep, thank you.
Any comments from the public? Yes.
Tonya Carney, South Burlington parent.
One second.
Oh, I guess so. I'm a low-top. Hi, Tonya Carney, South Burlington parent, have three kids in the school. I really like the idea of the flyer to get the information out, but I would ask, all of you are so well-versed in all of the jargon and the technical terms, and how the budget is funded, and it's so complicated, and I would just really urge you to make it as simple to understand as possible, because, you know, I personally have been up to a lot of meetings, really trying to understand, and I'm having a hard time just wrapping my head around it. So I feel like the average voter was maybe just going to glance at something once, you know, is going to be paying less attention, and I have even harder time. So just keeping it as simple and to the point and direct would be great. And I would hope, the one thing that I'm not getting is a real clear explanation of why there's a 5% increase and where that money's going. So even something that specifically, you know, fits by line item to say, yes, it's increased 5%, but here's why, that would be really simple to understand, and I understand that's an impossible job, but that's just a suggestion. Thank you.
I do see a, one of the future postings is, why do tax rates go down when expenditures go up? So there's some anticipation of that. Any other comments? All right. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 9, unless there was anything else, David?
Nope.
Master Planning and Visioning.
So I don't have a lot for you. This is just a little snippet of what we've done in... So the first page is my disclaimer, that we've been busy with budgets, and I don't have a lot of additional progress. But what I wanted to include is I wanted to include kind of where we are under the master planning and visioning work, and the first one, which is the one that you have, which was done in the first part of April, was specific to the cost per pupil. And so I've attached that again. I just, I don't want you to lose sight of that. I know we talked about it. I'm soon to have enrollments and the staffing allocations to you. And again, I want to be really clear that we're trying to move forward with this at a pretty fast pace. I was hoping we would be farther along, but obviously, we've had a few distractions in trying to keep this in front of you. So that's where I'm at. I don't know if there's, again, I think it's just good to highlight what the expectations are from me to you, and I don't know if you have any particular questions around that body of work and/or how you want to receive it.
Yeah, I think my reaction on this first is I think we have to keep going back to the three action items that the Board, I think it was three, that we highlighted in terms of contingency planning, and I'm not going to remember all of them, but to lead with those, so to fit any interim work in under one of those three would be very helpful, as well as identifying where there might be needed expertise. And I know the budget has dialed back the specific expertise on the building assessment as it relates to the middle school, high school planning, but any progress that's kind of made on that, that can be made as the budget goes to the voters, would be helpful.
Okay.
I think framing it in those Board-approved actions is going to be relevant, so...
Yeah, I think any early heads-up that we can get. If one of those deadlines that we had set for ourselves in those actions is unlikely to be met, and if it's not going to be met, you know, when the process might sort of, you know, do we need to set a new deadline, or do we, you know, what resources you might need from us, or, you know, what assistance you might need from us to kind of move the process along? Because I know that, I think the contingency plan for Chamberlain was the first one up, and I believe that was due by the end of the year, and that's going to be a little bit challenging, I'm guessing, at this stage. But, yeah, as Elizabeth said, it would be helpful to see it all sort of fit into the frame, somewhere in the framework that we kind of established, as opposed to sort of piecemeal bits of information. I mean, I would almost envision sort of, we used to call it in consulting a ghost deck, you know, that there's almost a ghost book that sort of says, here are the sections that we're kind of expecting to provide you with, and here's an update of the book and where it is, as opposed to, because I find with all the paper that we get inundated with, with all the different things that we're working on right now, it's hard to keep track of exactly where we are in this process in particular. And it would be helpful if we could start just sort of seeing a familiar format and being able to pick out the things that are new.
Helpful. We've, just for, I think it's important for people to know, we've kept it on our agendas. In some cases, I've had, I have not been able to give you a lot of new information, at least the last Board meetings, but it's on there, and I think it's important that it does stay on there, because it's an important component, so I appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, and actually, relative to Chamberlain being kind of one of the priorities, it might be helpful, David, David and I had an opportunity to meet with a resource that's been engaged by the airport, former city manager, Winewski Deetacaro, who also served for years, business manager of Chittenden East, I believe, south?
Yes, Chittenden East.
So kind of comes with great...
Chittenden Central.
Central, sorry. Comes with great municipal experience, and more recently, school and financial background. But do you want to kind of just give a brief update on her role working with the airport?
Sure. Again, as Elizabeth said, we met with her, it was, again, a reach-out from the airport, to the airport leadership, to really work on communications, to solicit important feedback. What are some of the things, there were some questions that she asked us. What are some of the things that you need answers to? And provided us the opportunity to at least provide that feedback. And again, I think this is, you know, a way to reach out to us, South Burlington School District specifically, given the close proximity of our Chamberlain School, and to, you know, be able to think about how we continue to move forward. So again, that was a nice opportunity. I think there's some follow-up things that need to happen now as a result of that meeting, and I expect that that will start.
Anything else from the Board? Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 10, executive implementations policy monitoring. 2.10 curriculum development and review, and this is worn for action?
So this is coming back to you actually second time.
After the first time, they got it last...
Last time, but, right. So I don't know, again, it's, we warn it for action, but you may have enough things that you want to ask questions about again, so it's up to you. We can, Elizabeth, we can do it whichever way you'd like. We can walk through it. I don't know if Board members have had a chance to review it. Again, Stuart's here to answer some of the tougher questions.
Maybe to preface it, I'll just read the overview for the public, and then if we can focus on where the changes have been. So this is 2.10 curriculum development and review. This is the superintendent shall not allow the district to be without written curricula aligned with Vermont standards and Board ends policies that are coordinated across all grade levels in schools. Further, the superintendent shall not fail to review the curricula periodically based upon student performance results, learning opportunities data, new research, and updated content knowledge with the goal of all students meeting the Board's ends policy.
So you'd like us to walk you through some of the changes, Elizabeth? Is that...
Yes, yeah. And actually, can I clarify one? I think even on the definition, don't we refer to this as the district's ends policy?
We usually, I don't know what we've, yeah, district ends, and we have to make those changes.
We hadn't changed.
Okay.
District. We had it, I think, interchanged at certain times, too. We were back and forth.
We can see the interpretations, this district.
Okay, so Stuart, how about we walk through where the changes?
Do you want to give them the mic?
Yeah, why don't you...
Oh, you can give them the roving one.
Actually, you want to sit right there and use this one, or you want to sit at the table?
Use this mic here?
My name tag.
So, everybody can hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
Great. So the main changes that we made to this policy actually happened last year, because before that, it didn't reflect the educational quality standards that were passed by the state of Vermont. And so we begin to reference those and their requirements related to curriculum. So because the curriculum is long and document, we give you the links to where you can find the curriculum on our webpage, and also to the EQS, and to our Rubicon Atlas page, which keeps our 6th through 12 curriculum. So the highlights are in yellow, the big changes, and they basically move as we move along, so that last year, we had developed a scope and sequence. For example, for the new science standards for K-5, this year, teachers are teaching that scope and sequence, whereas last year, they taught one unit. So those are the kinds of things, as we move towards full implementation of bridges in a second year, which is our math program. Not to, I want to just say that we use programs to drive curriculum, that they're not the same thing. Often, we supplement programs in different ways to make sure that we are meeting the standards, which is the key. And you can see, as we've moved up, one of the things that happened at the high school a few years ago, is we started actually designing our own math course, first with Math Course 1, then with Math Course 2. This year, for the first time, students are taking Math Course 3. The juniors are the first group of students who are in this program. And again, the program was changed and the curriculum aligned to teach the Common Core standards in terms of what was emphasized in the high school. And moving down to continuous improvement, we have the continuous improvement plans. I gave you a sample of one last... I gave you a sample of one last year. We now actually have all our new continuous improvement plans. As of May 15th, all the schools handed in their, their plans and not only because it's important and they will be coming to you in the second meeting in June, but for your, for you to look at them, but actually our requirements in terms of where we get federal funding are much more tied to our continuous improvement plans than ever before. The next page is the graduation policy that you passed a little while ago. I think it was in 2014.
Mm-hmm.
And that is the policy under which students who will graduate in 2020 will graduate. They're their first class in the state of Vermont, will be graduating based on proficiency as opposed to Carnegie units. And of course, those are students who are presently in the ninth grade. And then, as we continue that, we have been working on revising the indicators. I've shown you those kind of sheets before. By the end of this year, the high school, middle school indicators will be in good shape. And next year, the plan is to move those indicators down into the elementary school. And those are indicators of proficiency based on those proficiency requirements. And the big piece, and again, we have students here in the ninth and 10th grade have been taking aligned assessments and I actually reported that in the ends policy review that I did just a few weeks ago. And so, you know, I always report compliance on this policy. You always say I'm out of compliance because everything's a work in progress. But I think we're progressing and we're on target and doing what the policy says, which is to make sure that we have a written policy aligned with the standards of the state of Vermont. And that's what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. So, there's probably some jargon in there that some, at least-
Oh, yeah.
-board members maybe didn't catch, Alex, although I know you know a lot of those, but I don't want to assume that or folks.
Just one other thing, if you look at the attachment, that's a sample I chose. I think this is Chamberlain's continuous improvement plans, but they all pretty much look the same. They obviously have different tasks, but one of the things that we added last year, so this is the second year that this will be the case, is that we have a section, this is not required by the state of Vermont, in which we put the district ends that are covered by any particular part of that continuous improvement plans, whether they're academic or in the case of the social-emotional learning part, whether they're related to personal development or citizenship. I will let you know that this is the last year of this form of continuous improvement plan. The state just changed their plan to align more with the EQS and actually not this year, but next spring, we will be presenting you with new continuous improvement plans that are modeled on the five concepts that are in the EQS, which are academic proficiency, personal learning, safe schools, high-quality staffing, and financial responsibility. So, actually, while we don't have much right now about financial in our continuous improvement plans by school, except for resource allocation, that will be much broader in the future.
EQS is education quality standards.
I'm sorry, the educational quality standards.
There's all that jargon that's coming back that we know we need to pay attention to.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I live in a world of initials. I could go all night long.
No, no, thanks.
So, a quick question. You mentioned, you said that you report policy compliance and then we usually say you're not in compliance?
Last year, you said I was in compliance. This includes the, the things we changed have to do with the compliance plan from last year.
Could you remind me what that is?
I, I can't without it in front of me.
I think, well, a lot of it was around just the implementation of some of the new standards that were coming. So, as a result of what, we didn't have clarity.
But, but, but I probably should have had that included here as part of the crossouts, but I do not, for whatever reason.
So, but in the summation, you do say it does not fully align with the South Burlington ends policy. And that would suggest that it's not in compliance since the requirement is that in fact that the curricula align with the Vermont standards and the district ends, it should say, policies. But I guess the question is, what more is there to be done to have these more fully aligned with the South Burlington ends?
So, so, you know, that's interesting, Chris Martin. I think I would change the language. I'm not sure that it doesn't fully align. I think I'm referring to the fact that we don't have monitoring that we know that we're successful to the ends, though I don't know that this policy needs to do that. So, I would tell you that our curriculum is aligned with the ends, but we don't have, as you know, through the ends monitoring, the data that proves how successful we are at that.
So, it should read "and aligns-"
Yes.
"-with the South Burlington ends." Okay.
You know, on this one, I feel like this could benefit from just a, I was, I was going to qualify by saying simple. It probably won't be simple, but I know I've seen this before at the high school level where we kind of link any mandated programs like EQS, PBGR, PLPs with district-driven programming and kind of in a cascading way, show where, where district activity supports state and federal programs. I feel like it would be really helpful to have kind of a graphic, one-page summary sheet that, I know I've seen it, I think it's been referred to as the placemat or, I forget what it looked like.
Sure.
That-
Provided.
Would be the backup. I don't, I don't know if it's exclusively linked to this monitoring report, but it would become the framework by which subsequently we'd, we could say that the superintendent, you know, has written curricula aligned with all these standards and the ends policies and then to understand where student performance results, learning opportunities data may, may serve as evidence, whether it's in this report or others, when we look at measuring outcomes, sort of where, where there's going to be a metric that supports each of those initiatives.
Sure, we could certainly do, we could add a page like that.
And then, am I correct in saying that the second part of this that says, "shall not fail to review the curricula periodically based upon," does that indicate that everything below that should be evidence within this report?
It's, I'm not-
Well, for instance, it says, "curriculum based on student performance results, learning opportunities data, new research, and updated content knowledge." Should those items serve as evidence in this monitoring report?
I don't think so. I mean, I think your, your monitoring report specifically talks about and provides the results is different than this. This is just simply making sure that, that I'm making the linkages and demonstrating curricular changes periodically, given the review of results. So, there is linkage to the other monitoring report in linking to this one. So, if you saw great discrepancy between the results in the other monitoring report, then you would say, we're, we see disparity between the monitoring reports. Clearly, you're not, you could say, in the monitoring report, that you're not in compliance because of the disjointedness between the two.
Yeah, can I comment on that as well? Because I think we have evidence of that in here on the top of the third page where it's talking about the math courses that are, you know, attempting to get students ready for calculus, for instance. That says to me that this is part of the process, that they're looking at performance and it's going into how the curricula is changing. And the same with the continuous improvement, which is really focusing on at least that aspect of the continuous improvement plans that have to do with curriculum and such. So, so I actually do see that there is that evidence of that periodic or ongoing, I should say.
I mean, I'm, I'm just simply trying to say if you saw outcomes that were, let's just say, over the, going, going down, 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 and we were making our curriculum development and review, you would, you, I think you would, a board would say, something's askew here between the two monitoring reports.
Well, I think what I'm reacting to is if you're calling out these four specific areas, but not referencing them in the monitoring report or pointing to, by way of example, where would new research show up in a monitoring report? If it not, if not this one, somewhere else?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I think the fundamental question I have is, is the listing of these four sort of as, as examples or is it intentional in that those four should be evidence somewhere?
I think it's more referenced and that's how we go about the balance between the outcomes and the results and the curriculum in which we prepare. So, new research is kind of on me to say, similar to what Stuart talked about, is, you know, best practice, our continuous improvement plans should be embedded in kind of that new research. And similar to, you know, we mentioned, you know, math course one, two, or three, that's tied into some research around how we deliver the content of mathematics and partly connected to, to the research that we've done. It's hard, I, I'm, I mean, I think if you wanted to go in and then show, I would need to show what research I did.
Well, it might, it might be that the interpretation is really based upon such evidence or drivers as.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't, I don't want to, you know, wordsmith this, but to me, there's either intent in calling that out in this particular monitoring report or, or it's going to be referenced somewhere else with some discipline.
So, I want to make sure I understand. So, are you suggesting, Elizabeth, that the superintendent's interpretation should be adjusted then? That it's not at this point acceptable?
Unless those items are specifically called out in some level of detail. I mean, my expectation would be if, if they're in here, they should be called out. So, and-
Called out in evidence or somewhere.
I welcome to be challenged on that by any other board member, but if, if it's not going to be called out, it, it's based on, to me, based on such, or based upon such evidence or drivers as, would be my recommendation.
So, I'm not changing the policy or changing the interpretation?
It would be changing the interpretation.
Or changing the evidence?
Yeah.
And I think the key is that it's, you know, that it's periodic review. So, we may not be seeing that they've looked at research now because there may not be relevant research in this particular monitoring report.
Yeah, just, just to say, I mean, we went through a process where we selected bridges, for example. That was a year-long process, looking at six different math programs and then testing two of them. That was talked about more, you know, in past monitoring reports. So, that's one of the other pieces, you know, especially because we do this report, which I'm glad of late in the year, you know, it kind of covers like half of one year and half into the other, you know? Otherwise, it'd be so out of date that it wouldn't be, I think, very relevant to you if we just talked about what ended at last June, for example.
Well, we can, I hear what you're saying. We can take a shot at the interpretation, provide some additional clarity there.
Anything else from the board? Any questions or comments? Jerry?
Can you tell me, are your proficiencies measured linearly? That is by year, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade? Or is there any type of summative or cumulative assessment of knowledge gained over the four-year period? And the reason I ask is because in my experience as an educator, students will learn the information that they have to learn for a course, demonstrate proficiency. The course is over, they move on to another course. One year later, if you ask them about the information they learned in the course one year earlier, they've lost half of it. So, that, that begs the question of what's the purpose of an educational system? If you're just testing proficiency or competencies in a defined period of time as opposed to by the time they graduate, have they learned this information and take it with them?
Well, we have a series of things. I'll let Stuart respond in just a second. You know, we have a series of things that happen differently than ever before around proficiency-based graduation, which is upon us, is that you need to be able to demonstrate kind of what you're saying, kind of that end result along the way. So, it's, it's less about the specific content and passing that specific task, but you need to begin to apply that in different ways, one. And I think the other, some additional metrics for like sophomore exhibition, for a variety of things, we're looking at attributes specific to our ends around things that we want to see matriculate as students progress throughout their four years in our, in our high school, for instance. So, again, and Stuart, I don't know, you want to add a little bit more on an assessment?
Sure. And I know I'm supposed to address the board. I feel a little weird having it back.
Yeah, that's all right.
See, somebody asks I, you know, talk-
You can address the board, now I'm just listening from the back.
That's okay, as long as you can hear me, it's fine. Yeah, we have a series of assessments and a full assessment calendar of a variety of things, some of which are state mandated and so that all kids, third through eighth grade, take the S back, for example, which, you know, looks at the Common Core state standards. That's also true of 11th graders. Actually, the state is going to be mandating some new assessments as well based on their proposal to the feds, which will include, for example, if it's approved by the federal government, a PE assessment that all students in the state of Vermont will take. Additionally, we have local assessments of various types. And what we've been focusing on the last two years is this question of what does it mean to be proficient? Old graduation requirements meant that a student literally could graduate with a D minus in the certain number of credits and still get a diploma with a D minus average. And proficiency is looking at it in a very different way to really make sure that they have the skills necessary to be successful. So, we've been focusing, because it is this year's ninth grade class that will graduate on performance assessments that are common across the ninth and 10th grade, and we're working on what we consider to be, and we, and these are, do not, do these, these don't exist yet, but we have placeholders, you know, kind of like the TED Talk, the complex math problem, but the idea of creating integrated project kind of work that students can do that will show that they're ready to graduate. One of the other things that's very different is while this, the board here, you know, has created their graduation policy, it's based on what's required under the educational quality standards. And one of those things that's a change is besides the academic standards, that all students also have to show transferable skills, that this is actually required for graduation. And those are clear and effective communication, self-direction, creative and practical problem-solving, and the responsible and involve citizenship and informed and integrative thinking. And so, these align very well, of course, with this, with the, with the ends that the, the district has as well.
I mean, I do think, you know, Jerry, you know, we, we have a multitude of classes that we teach throughout the district. Certainly, if we're just focusing on the high school, I mean, I think that the transfer is what we're looking at. And I know you and I have had the opportunity to talk. You know, our hope is, is that the content knowledge that a student receives is able to transfer into other content areas and/or into, you know, other projects or opportunities. And again, I cited a few of those examples, like our real-world design students, you know, who were part of, you know, they're on their own time, many, many hours, but applied, you know, content of literacy and technology and scientific research, you know, into their, into their, into their project, which, which they want in this country. So, that, that's certainly the goal. To say that it doesn't exist would, would be wrong because there are certain content areas where, where students are, you know, needing to pass the test and they'll work really hard at, at, at learning that content. And there's some, you know, probably in those, in their busy lives, there's some loss of material before it can be appropriately applied. And that's that relevance connection that we think, you know, is really critically important and we got to keep working on it.
I mean, I do think it would be worth your while in this whole system to assess after a number of years of education, how much of the core content, and I understand critical thinking and stuff like that, but I'm talking about content. What are the three branches of government and what do they do? I would hope all students, when they graduate from high school, can answer that question, but you'd be surprised. It's been my experience that students learn well, they test well, and they forget well. And the only way to address that is to make this a formal part of your curriculum, an ongoing assessment of core knowledge, which you don't want students to forget. And there are many ways to do that. I just think you should consider it because it's my experience, students forget very well after they learn very well.
Other comments? All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item 11, update on negotiations.
Thank you, Stuart.
So, we'll obviously hold that item for action. So, we'll obviously hold that item for action at a future meeting.
Yes, yep.
Do you want to do an update on support staff?
Sure. Martin and I met with support staff last week, and we have another meeting scheduled for Monday at 4:30 with support staff to continue working toward an agreement with the support staff. We did make sort of minor progress on some of the smaller items at the last meeting, but we still have to tackle some of the bigger items in our upcoming meetings, but we have, I think, three meetings on the schedule, and we've scheduled larger blocks of time to really sort of try to make some progress on the bigger items with them.
Do you want to give an update?
Yeah, sure. This past Monday, we had a mediation session with the teachers' association, it was three and a half, four hours, and we did not make any progress, and we will be moving on to fact-finding, which is the next stage in the process, on June 6th. And make clear, you know, we've, I know that we've had, there's been information out in the public about the different proposals that have been out there, and, and know that the school board is, is sticking to what it has on the table, given, given the situation we are in and giving what's going on in Montpelier as far as health insurance plans and the like. So, we will have the June 6th fact-finding. What happens there is each side presents their proposals and their arguments for why the proposals are appropriate, and then the fact-finder, usually about 30 days later, hopefully it's going to be quicker this time, comes back with a report that is not binding, but explains the fact-finder's view of the, of the different positions to hopefully help the parties reach agreement. So, after that fact-finder report comes out, it becomes public 10 days after the report has been released, and 30 days after the report is released, the board is, may declare finality and impose contractual terms, and the association can, can strike, but there's that 30-day period after that. So, we're going to keep pushing along and hopefully have some sort of resolution before or very close to the beginning of next school year.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board or comments? Comments from the public? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to reviewing topics for other paper articles. Oh, is mine not working? So, I think Bridgette has already circulated a draft for submission regarding the budget. I don't know if everyone's had an opportunity to look at that. When do you need feedback, Bridgette?
Judy has been very flexible with us in terms of allowing us to, technically, the deadline is the Thursday before it is supposed to run. This calendar, my understanding is this is not quite correct, that we are actually trying to run the budget article in the 25th newspaper, which would mean that tomorrow would technically be the deadline. She's been very generous with us, given the situation we've been in, so I would have a few more days after that, but the earlier we can get it to her, the better. She had also, in an email with Elizabeth, said that she could expand the word count a little bit for the budget article to 800 words from our usual 500 words, so that we can get a little more explanation into that article about why we've done some things and the status of a couple of issues in the budget. So, as Elizabeth said, I forward that to everyone around noon today, so any information or any feedback you could get me really by the end of the week would be great, so over the next two days, and then I would aim to wrap that up over the weekend and get it off to Judy, hopefully Saturday or Sunday.
And then, we haven't had this discussion, I know I circulated to the board the possibility of a four-page insert that we have a quote on, so at some point, I really think, David, it's, it's more up to your direction whether you want to recommend, or what you'd like to recommend in terms of communicating any additional budget information vis-à-vis the other paper.
Okay.
Maybe that's something you can do by email, and then the board can weigh in.
Okay.
Other topics for upcoming other paper articles?
I know I have the mine scheduled for May 4th or late April. I'm revising that based on some of John Aubin's feedback, and it, it looks like we want to make the budget a priority, so I'll have that, it's forthcoming, don't know when.
I'm thinking that might be good after the legislative break, in case there's updated information.
Yeah. Whenever that's going to be, yes.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if we should, well, maybe not the July one, but I would like to have one that talks about outcomes, and I guess specifically talk a little bit about graduation rates, talk about what some of our students are doing, where they're going to school afterwards. I know that's focusing on high school and graduation and such, so maybe it can talk about some other successes, but I think that we really should.
I think we could focus it on, you know, all of our students. I mean, we have elementary, middle, and high school students that are, you know, doing a variety of things that are, I think, are important, could be important to note, so I like that. You know, we, you've had some things of students at the middle school, we've had some students at the elementary that, you know, we can kind of showcase a little bit or share some of the outcomes of, of the data, so we certainly could do that. When were you thinking, Martin? Particular date?
I was looking at maybe before school gets back in session for the August 3rd, so right before then. It's a little bit of a wrap-up of one year and intro to the next one. Did we want to do another welcome-back one for 9/7?
That's nice.
I can take that one. Martin, are you volunteering on outcomes?
Sure. It's been a while since I've done one.
Alex, we talked about you doing one.
Yeah, I was about to mention that, actually. I believe at a previous board meeting, we talked about me doing an article about what it's like to be a student rep, so that we could give some info for the next student rep when we're looking.
And it's also to inform on the process for how student rep applies for the board?
Absolutely, yeah. And I think we also mentioned something about talking or discussing personalized, personalized learning plans. Yeah, I know I volunteered to assist with that because I, I'm in the big-picture program, so we, we do a lot of personalized learning plans, but I also wanted to mention that we discussed covering that at some point as well.
So, would the board be okay if we have the student rep to the school board kind of experiences and application process and so forth? If that runs in October 5th, is that consistent with the timing that Pat Burke would be sending out new applications to students so they'd be on board, or should it be earlier than that?
I think it would be better to be earlier than that. And it would be better, I think, if it could be earlier, because by the time you then fill, you're, you're getting close to the first part of the year.
Yeah. Can we move that, then? Alex, can we move yours? It would mean getting a draft to the board by the end of August.
That's fine.
Would that work?
Yeah.
So, let's move the student rep for the publication in the 9/7 issue, and that way, students coming back will see that, and we can accelerate that application process.
So, we're not welcoming back?
We're not welcoming back.
Could we just, would the other paper be interested in just doing two consecutive weeks and then nothing for a month?
Probably not. There, there's kind of a commitment that's been made for, with both the school board and the city council, it's kind of one segment a month.
Okay.
Usually, on the welcome-back, I, I mean, maybe we can talk with Judy around, they sometimes do a, a welcome-back, you know, edition. I know Cory, I think you've done those in the past, so maybe that's a way we could cover it, too, and maybe there's some interviews or things of that nature that could capture some students and some staff and community members about school being back in session, maybe.
So, we're, we're missing a subject for the, to run in this July 6th issue, and I'd say that might be a good time to cover fact-finding, except I don't think we'll have that report back, or we will just have it in our hands, and it wouldn't, we wouldn't have it for the 10 days.
So, should the, well, when is the Act 68, Ed spending one? We haven't put that in as far as.
I, I was thinking of taking my draft article and turning it into two of them, because there was a lot to cover, and I had a real hard time keeping under 500 words.
I was wondering how you were going to do that.
I wasn't.
Why don't we shoot for one article on education spending and maybe funding in that, to be delivered the end of June and run in the 7/6 issue?
Okay.
Okay. So, we've kind of got a lineup of the next three with PLPs kind of on deck. Is that adequate for now?
Yeah, I don't think fact-finding, one on fact-finding is, as far as what the fact-finder has said, is the kind that Judy was picturing us doing anyway.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah.
And we may have negotiations updates anyway.
Right.
Okay. All right. Is that good for now, David?
Yep, it's good.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, sorry.
Um, I also wanted to ask, oh, here, I also wanted to ask about perhaps an article on the implementation of the new mascot would be something. Not really sure how the process is going to continue with that in terms of next year, but I think when it is being implemented, that would be something to discuss or write about. Yeah.
On the list.
Thanks.
All right. Unless there's anything else there, we'll move on to the annual, oh, sorry.
I wanted to, I wanted to cover the, actually, we're, we're right, I think, we're all right. We're on the next item, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're on the annual board agenda and work plan?
Interruption. So, what you have is the work plan, which is our longer sheet, again, to Alex and Steve. This is a draft, and we are looking for input, and then also our meeting dates, which we have that, that we, we move around to different schools. I want to be clear, sometimes when we have large, you know, large venues or large, we keep them at, at middle, at the middle school here, just because we get hampered by space and/or parking when we travel to those other ones. But usually, what we've been doing is when we travel to the other schools, we do ask for, you know, some student engagement with the board, an opportunity to provide a little bit of some specific work, and again, we were, I think our last one was at Chamberlain, right, with the, with the B-bots, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, those were, those are some examples of what we have done, and I think continuing that's really nice, but I, I think, first of all, we'd like to get a, a read from the board as we look at, look forward. We've obviously got some July and August dates, and we've published the, the rest of the, the calendar here, so if there's some things that you think need to change, this is a, an opportunity to look at that.
Do I get to tell you which ones I'm not going to be at?
Yep, that's, that's good, and if you have too many people that can't make it, then we should, we should talk about that, but.
Yeah, I know I'm not at August 16th or November 15th, other than that.
Okay.
Yeah, if you, the rest of the board doesn't know your availability, if you can take the draft meeting dates home and let David and Delina know as soon as possible if there's conflicts.
Yep.
Yeah, especially for those summer dates. There's a little flexibility on moving those.
Yeah, that first July one, I know, is a challenge.
The July 12th?
The July 12th one is a challenge, because we'll be out for the first two weeks of July. As a family, last year, I drove back from Massachusetts for the meeting. I'm not sure there's a lot of family support for that this year, so I could participate by phone, certainly, but if we keep that on the 12th, I, I won't be able to be here in person. The 19th, if we moved it one week later, I could be there, but I don't know what that does to everyone else's summer calendar.
That's, that's the same for me.
The 12th?
I could dial in the 12th, but I could be here in person the 19th.
The 19th works just as well for me.
I have no preference.
Or is there some contract issues? So, so.
Well, it depends on where we're at with some things, but we can do a variety of things through warned meetings, in which we could get you by phone for contractual-related matters. I just, I don't, we don't, I don't know right now where we're going to be, so I think we, we'll have to reserve the right that we may need to schedule a, a warned meeting, and if you can't be or present, maybe you can be by phone, so we can at least do those things.
But that would be a very narrow kind of meeting, so maybe have the July 19th for the full meeting, and we may have to have a very brief contract.
So, am I hearing the 19th, then, can, is, is better for?
I would much prefer the 19th, yeah.
Steve and Bridgette, for sure. Okay? So, we can make the change to the 19th. Does that work? Any, anything else, Delina? I know questions?
It's just the July 15th date.
Yeah.
One-year-only contracts.
And we may have some conversation, given where we are with, that's a particular, that, that the July 15th is 19.6 of the contract, which says anybody who receives a contract after the 15th is in a one-year non-renewable contract. So, depending on where we are with a multitude of things, we may, you know, I may be back to you to request some flexibility to that, because given reduction in force notices of people reapplying that have been here, there may need to be some flexibility based on where we are with that. So, I would, I would need to exercise that. Thank you, Delina.
So, I have a number of topics as it relates to the work plan, and I guess we'll just throw them out, and we can, it, it may end up that these would be best addressed in a, a longer working session for the board, like a summer retreat. Retreat sounds way better than it ends up being, but we'll call it a summer retreat. Some of the issues I think that have come up kind of over the, over the past several months are really around addressing sustainability, and I think that requires a longer conversation on what does that mean, and how would we define it, and how would we measure progress toward that. I think community engagement is a, is another area that we need to be thinking about. I know these are meetings of the board in public, I know some of the feedback we're getting is really where are the opportunities to interact informally, and I think we need, as a board, need to have that conversation. That may be linked very closely to a board self-evaluation, which, for the newer board members, we did have a process where we would do some board and meeting self-evaluation, which largely, on the meeting side, it was kind of the superintendent's preparedness, but that practice didn't provide a lot of actionable feedback, so I think we need to sort of think about board self-assessment and evaluation going forward, and then also just kind of linking outcomes to our ends, and some of that will come up in our metrics conversations, but clearly an opportunity in, in communicating with the public around highlighting outcomes and making sure there's awareness of kind of the value for the dollar spent within the district. So, I think that there's, there's a host of issues in there, and the last one, which I, I think may be linked to some of these, is a potential review of, I know what we've, those of us who've been on the board a little bit longer refer to as modified policy governance, and I've had a brief conversation with David, but really assessing is policy governance modified or not continuing to work as a governance model for the board, and maybe being a little bit. And maybe being a little bit deliberate about looking at where it's working well and keeping the best of policy governance and maybe where we feel it's standing in the way of dialogue and figuring out how to respond to that. So I know that's a lot. But that's, those are things I know that have come up from the community, have come up from board conversations and have been kind of top of mind for me. So I'll throw that out there and suggest that maybe we think about a working session sometime during the summer.
I'd add one to that, and that's the policies. You know, we have, of course, we're a policy governance district, but also we have required or mandated policies. And so we have to kind of run a parallel system here where we have required policies and then we have policy governance. And I'm, we're currently in a place where we need to be updating, refining, and making sure we're in compliance with the, with like model policy work. And I know right now we have some that we're in need of updating. So I talked a little bit to Elizabeth, and actually, I think we talked a little bit with some of you about maybe a smaller group, cohort of the board to be doing some of that work and then bringing it back full board to make those updates. Because I think it's, it's time, it's one of those other time-consuming things that it's hard to get it all done. But I would, I would just say that might be one that we, we need to also add.
Other comments from the board?
That sounds like a good list.
Yeah, so, I mean, are folks amenable to a longer working session sometime during the summer?
Yes.
Yes.
Maybe we can take a pass, David, at sort of putting this list together and determining what might be better as subcommittee work? And then what might be a workable agenda that we can accomplish in a slightly longer working session?
Yep, good.
Okay. And Alex or Isaiah, feel free to add to that. Or subtract. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 14, setting the agenda for the June 7th meeting.
I think you're, I think you're good. We have the curriculum development review. We have it listed again for action. Trying to think if we've missed anything here.
Do we have budget and polling review?
The budget communication. I don't know if everything falls under that. We might sort of modify the title to sort of be a review of what happens on the steps.
Or if you want to put some, yeah. Budget, budget update, budget, maybe that's more.
Results.
Yeah. Call it what it is.
I have a question. For future agenda items, we have communication enhancement. What's that, please?
I think that goes a little bit to what Elizabeth was just talking about. Sort of, well, partly, I think in the back of our minds has been this question of Facebook and whether it's working or whether we should do it and then how we should do it. And then, you know, Elizabeth has sort of mentioned this idea that we need some way of engaging on a, on a more informal level, perhaps with the community, as opposed to our very structured board meetings, at which we have a whole list of things to get done. So we do need to just sort of talk about that at some point.
I remember similarly, it was just ways to improve communication.
So will we be able to take?
Yes.
The EQS items? Well, let's see, any, any additional feedback on the June 7th agenda? So if we move on to future agenda items, do we have an opportunity to take the first two off with the review? Okay.
Oh, yeah. You beat me to it.
I think if we look to incorporate the evaluation and communication enhancement into the working meeting, we might be able to take those off. Anything else anyone wants to move to an active agenda item at this point?
One question was evaluation.
Yes, yeah, we need to.
Was that this one or was it the next one? That's why I was sort of pausing. Was it, was it meant to be on this agenda or the meeting following?
I think it should be on the following one.
Okay.
Yeah, we've talked about the superintendent evaluations. So we need to talk about getting a date on the calendar. But I think it would be the meeting following this for public.
I think that's right, given that we would have had the budget vote the day before then.
What was the approval of AP orders over $50,000?
I think we had some board questions around obligation or what that meant and where that. I think somebody said some questions on that, so.
Can that be done in training?
I think so.
It, was that from?
A board member asked a question specific to that.
Came from that side of the room. I can't remember if you, if it was you or Julie, somebody over there asked that question. But yeah, I don't remember exactly what it was.
So why don't we cover that either in the superintendent's report or training? And maybe just go over the current policy that has that requirement in it? Yeah, for, for the newer board members, that there's been kind of, there was an ongoing discussion of new hires and AP orders used to be approved by the board. And because those decisions typically fell before board meetings, there were, you know, situations where checks had to be cut to vendors prior to board approval. There were situations where offers need to be extended for employment prior to a board meeting being held. So the decision was made under the policy govern, or the policy of financial conditions, I think, and protecting assets of the district, I believe. That specific to financial decisions, the board would, approval would be required for items over $50,000. And then there's, it's a consent agenda versus an action item on new hires and resignations as well. That is something, we can always review that under policy governance. But that's the current practice. Okay, so seeing nothing else on that one, we'll move to consider the minutes of meetings of May 3rd, May 8th, and May 10th. Start with May 3rd, any changes? Seeing none, those are approved, May 8th. Any comments on May 8th?
Any more time, Lauren?
Do you have? No, I don't have any comments.
Give me a minute.
Whether I have it or not.
Do people have the May?
In the email?
They were emailed, and I don't think they have.
Do you want to bring those back?
Do we need to bring all of them or?
The first one, sorry.
You could just do the, you can bring the eighth back.
May 3rd is there.
Okay. Should we bring May 8th back? Or at least check email? Or, and May 10th?
Yeah, both those need to come back.
Okay, we'll bring those back. Okay. We should bring those two back then, David? All right, move on to the consent agenda on item 17. Want to cover that?
Sure. So we have a retirement, it's out of the high school, Karen Cuyard. She's a world language teacher. She's written to you, letting you know that she's retiring. And again, as customary, you know, she stated it's time for her, but she's also expressing a pretty big loss to serving students. So it's with heartfelt admiration for the students. So if you're all right, I'd be happy on your behalf to make sure that she's informed of, we're happy for her, but we're also a little bit sad to see her depart. She's been a long time French teacher. I think mostly French is what she's taught. Maybe I'm missing a world language. You guys know? Is it, is it just French? See, so.
I believe it's just French.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
I think we've had her for three years, the last three years in French.
So anyway.
Please pass on our thank you and for her service and gratitude.
Got it.
And best wishes. To that end, I think the normal kind of the history on retirements within the district has been about three or four a year. And can you give us an update, kind of where we're at right now?
We're at seven or eight, I think, at the present time, maybe seven, I think we're at currently. Could be off by one or two. Can, sounds right?
It's either six or seven.
So, yeah, we're seeing a slight uptick in the number of retirements.
All right, moving on to Agenda 18. Any questions or comments on AP orders 42 or 43? Those are not worn for action. There was one item, it was just a, I'm sure it shows up routinely, but I would like to ask on behalf of the board or with the rest of the board's permission that we get a better understanding on page seven, the Vermont State Teacher Retirement Contribution. I think it would be very helpful to understand what our contribution is and has been and then look at the funding liability of the teachers' pension to understand where we might have exposure based on our employee population. So that if there was a funding mechanism that required, you know, funding to go to 95% level, so what the exposure would be? Do you have any experience with that, Steve, at the state level?
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what that's related to. I don't know if it's the charge that they assessed on new teachers about three or four years back. Okay.
Well, and I'm, I'm looking at both the charge for new teachers, but also looking at the liability for the total population. Because even though that, we don't see that at the local level, it's kind of been in the state run rate. And I think it's important to have an understanding of that exposure.
Trying to remember, John's not here, but I don't know if that's, if the allocable portion of South Burlington's benefits get reported on the school's financials or if they just roll up to the state.
I don't know. We can, we'll have to find out.
Yeah, I don't either.
I mean, I thought, what I understood is actually that we're not responsible for the.
I don't believe, I think they roll up to the state for sure. But, but the formula I know that I've seen in the, in the retirement fund is on an average salary of about, ballpark number 60,000. The accrual is about, close to about 20,000. So proportionately, it would be higher for our teachers. And I just think it'd be important to be able to articulate fully loaded compensation and benefits packages, even though we don't bear that responsibility at the local level. We do bear at the state level as taxpayers.
And there has been a move to put some part of that responsibility in the property tax.
Yes, yeah.
Which would affect us.
So with the board's permission, and we can just, we would direct David to get some additional information there?
Yeah, I know. Makes good sense.
And we have an AP order on Agenda Item 19 of a check to the Howard Center in the amount of $83,753.26. Do you want to cover services or?
No, I think it's, it's the same thing you've been seeing. It's to the Howard Center, it's for services for our students. I think you've seen a fair amount of this already in our budget conversations. So I don't know if there's something really specific you want. I can't probably provide that as it's very student, unless it's more global, but.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes? Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.